Good evening. It is March the 15th approximately 7:00 PM. I'll call to order this city council meeting. Wow, it is great to see this packed house. As I announced earlier, if you would please, we wanted every parent to be here for the recognition ceremonies we're going to be doing. So we suspended the social distancing of the tape between the chairs so you could have a place to sit and stand, and I appreciate that. But we would ask if you could keep your mask in place, and that would help us all respect each other and try to take some protection here. So we appreciate if you can do that. First order of business is for recognition of roll call, if you will. Councilman Mattney is here in chamber. Councilwoman King is here in chambers. Councilman Crayling is here in chambers. Councilman Reynolds is here in chambers. Councilman Black is here in chambers. And Councilwoman Ms. Kuzner is available there, you know, remote. And we also have with us tonight our city attorney in chambers, along with our city minister, Mr. Madden, and various members of our staff that I see sitting around. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. One special note as based on the ordinance of 2011 concerning remote participation by council members through the definition of extenuating circumstances and the recent chan- or I don't know how recent, changes by state law. The only council person calling in or participating electronically is Ms. Kuzner, very remote. But she will be extended all the voting rights and privileges of a elected official. So she will be participating with us fully. We appreciate on that note. First order of business is our invocation to Mr. Crayling.
Thank you. Those of you who wish, please bow your heads. Thank you, Lord, for the many blessings in this room, in this city, in our state, and in our country. Thank you for getting us through this epidemic so far and help guide us now that the end is in sight to find a path back to the freedoms many of us took for granted before. Bless us with your wisdom. Bless us with your love and your peace tonight and help us do your will for the people of this great city. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Again, our welcome for coming out tonight. If you look around, they got here early. The back row, the Malden High School Boys Basketball Team, we recognized tonight for their outstanding achievements this past season. But I asked them to also look forward. There is, Andre helped me here, 12 U, 10 U, 10 U, 8 U Recreation Teams that won championships. So they're coming. They're going to be at our high school. So receive them, compete with them, show them the ropes. But they know what it's like to win. As you had set the bar for them at the high school level, so thank you. With that, we will get to one of the best privileges I have here as mayor is proclamations and presentations. So if we can have Mr. Black, Chair of Recreation, if you drove me down there, we'll go through these with the Malden High School Boys Basketball Team and then our own recreation program. All right, good, thank you. How about both coaches here? If y'all come up first? First of all, proclamation. Whereas the 2021 Malden High School Boys Basketball Team led by head coach Adam McLean and assistant coach Aron Flood had a great season, winning the Region 5A Championship, which is the second in schools' history since 1994. And whereas the Malden High School Boys Basketball Team finished the regular season with an overall record of 13-5 and a conference record of 7-1. And whereas the Malden High School Boys Basketball Team consisted of seniors James Cooper III, George Ford, William Curran, Daniel Stratford, Jameson Tucker, Nick Williams, Jadevin Young, juniors Caleb Byrd, Drake Downs, Jamal Jones, Riddick Owens, David Shear, Carter Taylor, and Parker Wingate, through hard work and dedication, persevered through multiple challenges throughout the season to win the Region 5A Championship. And now therefore be proclaimed that I, Terry Merritt, Mayor of the City of Malden, along with my fellow council members, do hereby proclaim March the 15th as Malden High School Boys Basketball Team Day and recognize them for winning the Region 5A Championship. Thank you, boys. Anybody want to take pictures of the coaches? We got it coming to you. One of you wants to leave names and bring them up? Guys, when I call your name, come on up here and get your proclamation. James Cooper. Will Kurian. Jameson Tucker. Nick Williams. Caleb Byrd. Drake Downs. Jamal Jones. Riddick Owens. David Shear. Carter Taylor. Parker Wingate. Hey, try to get closer together, guys. About three guys in the back real quick. You can get in front. Now representing our recreation program, the outstanding success they had this year with the 12 U boys, the 10 U boys, the 8 U boys, and the 12 U girls, our Recreation Director, Bart Cumberlander.
Thank you, guys. I hadn't seen this many people in this council chamber in a while. I think when they built Bala Warehouse in Forestwood. So anyway, thank y'all for coming out and thank you for sharing your kids with us. It's a commitment. My two kids play in the program as well. So when you get in the car tonight, thank you, Mom and Dad, for taking you to practice, getting you there on time, getting you the shoes they're supposed to be wearing and socks. My son Wyatt, that's what we have in search of shoes. He seems to lose them all the time, and parents, you know what I'm talking about when I'm going there. So also thank these guys behind me. They help us fund the uniforms that we have and the nice facility we had. I'll tell you a little story about that facility down there. About 15 years ago, the city had a vision. We were, our basketball program was getting real big and we just run out of room. We were playing at 9 o'clock at night. And so we came to, at the time, the council and said, hey, we need a facility. So that's the nicest facility probably in the state, and that's something that we try to take care of. I'm the clean freak. I'm the guy that probably said, Willie, get them all out, let's clean it. Because we were just, and I appreciate y'all working with us on that as well. We were trying to keep everybody's safety, and I think it really well. So I'm through babbling. I'm going to get Big Andre up here, and he's going to introduce these kids. So thank you again.
How y'all doing, everybody? I echo the words of my boss, Mr. Bart Cumberlander. Thank you all for your commitment through these times that we got going on right now. I mean, that was a huge commitment, and I appreciate all of you being here. I mean, you guys drove up to Bluffton, went over to Seneca, went Central Clemson, all over the place. Wherever I told you to go, you showed up, just like you did tonight. That's all I could ask for. You coaches, I thank you for your commitment. That means the world to me. You guys make this thing run, and I hope to keep you guys. Most definitely. But we'll start off with the 8 U boys. First, I want to call up the head coach Jermaine Woody and assistant coach LaMario Copeland. Both of these coaches led the 8 U boys to the Western District Championship and the State Championship. I can't ask for more from these guys. Let's do it again, guys.
First player I want to call up, Dominic Alexander. Anthony Anderson. Cannon Cook. Jaden Copeland. Joseph Friss. Erskine McGowan. Brayden Parker. Channing Raymond. And last but not least, Braylon Wallace. All right, everybody, this is your 2021 Western District and SCAP State Champions. 8 U, 8 U parents, players, coaches, you are more than welcome to stay, but you guys can leave. Thank you for everything that you've done for us this season. That was awesome. All right, everybody, now we're on our 10 U boys. Our 10 U boys was the Western District Champions as well. Also, they were the State Champions for the SCAP. Let's give them a round of applause, and let's get head coach Jay Freeman, assistant coach Adam West, and assistant coach Chris Edwards. All right, we'll start off with the players. Christopher Edwards. William Freeman. Quincy Green II. Tyler Haygood. Tracy Leslie. Chase Lundey. Tayshion Mackey. Kayden Redmond. Nash Rouse. Sylvester Savage III. Please give a round of applause for your 10 U All-Star State Champions and Western District Champions. All right, up next, we got the 10 U girls that they are the Western District Champions and also the 10 U SCAP State Girls Champions as well. I can say about this group here, I remember most of these girls playing like when they were eight years old. So as the girls' program has, as the girls' program has grown, we seen a lot more talent. So we've actually went from an 8 U All-Star team in the girls to a 10 U now, well, to a 10 U to now having all three age groups. So we have an age group for girls and All-Stars for each age division. So I just want to thank y'all, parents, and everybody for participating and coming out and supporting Malden Rick. Let's start off with the coaches. Got Shante Cheeks. Erica Bimbo. Is Kratis in here? Kratis. Kratis Grable, Kratis Grable, come on up. Kratis getting to be everybody today. Coach Shante Cheeks. Has Erica come in yet? All right, we'll go ahead with the girls' names. First girl I would like to call up is Kennedy Breland. Miracle Cheeks. Madison Decker. Serenity Umantel. I hope not to butcher too many names tonight. Ava Massey. Bailey Reed. Arius Samples. Aubrey Smith. Jada Smith. Anderson Williams. And these are your 10 U girls, Western District Champions and State Champions. All right, we got last but not least, the 12 U boys. And I'm going to start off this, oh, my bad, go ahead, my bad. I'm going to start off the story of, I'm pretty sure in district and statewide, I don't think they had a game within 30 points, if I'm correct. Some works, I don't think anybody played them close. In this age group, we, this is back-to-back State Champions for us. We won State last year in the 12, won again this year in the 12, hopefully. I'm talking to all y'all in here. Y'all come back for another year, because most of y'all 11. So we can win State again next year in that age group as well. But I want to bring up the coaches right now. Eric Lundey.
Justin Downs.
I'm going to start off with the names. Let's go. Ryan Butler. Xavier Brog. Equuvian Chumlee. Griffin Dotres. Justin Downs Jr. Jaden Johnson. Keon Knowles. Joshua Lomax. Eric Lundey Jr. And Christian McDowell. These are your 12 U boys, Western District winners and SCAP State Champions. Once again, not a game close. Was I right, 30? 35, there it is. Not closer than 35 points.
Hey, Malden High School Boys, varsity team, take just a second. Look at these young men up here. Show them the way home. But I can tell you right now, they coming. 35 points, can you hang? Thank you, guys.
You should have said, this was the team that won the first game.
Yeah, I did, that is my bad. I looked back there. That was correct, that is correct.
A few years ago, you in a hot boat.
Nah, I don't know if that's fair. Bye-bye.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it very much.
We appreciate it.
Thanks for your hard work, man.
I appreciate it.
Keep it going, keep it going. We'll work on 40 points next time. Thanks a lot, young man, appreciate it. Thank you, sir, thanks a lot, appreciate it. I saw all these young people in here and recognized just how long ago that was. So, to help me get back in my age group, it gives me great pleasure to do this proclamation. For my mama, anyway. But I asked Ms. King to join me up here, it gives me great pleasure to issue the following proclamation. Whereas June Crawley started her career with the city in 1993, she said she was only 13 when she started. She worked half-days for the fire department and half-days in police records. She later split her time between the fire department and city hall. And whereas in 1997, June was hired as the full-time administrative assistant to then-fire chief James Moore. Since then, she has worked under three fire chiefs. And whereas June Crawley has been a tremendous asset to the fire department and to the city of Malden as a whole by securing grants and helping to start the fire prevention program, which continues to thrive today. And whereas June has taken a well-deserved retirement as of March the 8th, 2021, to travel and spend time with her family. And now, therefore be it proclaimed that I, Terry Merritt, Mayor of the City of Malden, along with our fire department and my fellow council members, do hereby proclaim that we are proud of June Crawley's career with the city of Malden and privileged to know her. We wish her well in her retirement. June.
Not even any fire station would keep her hooded.
Really was waiting a long time on their fire station.
You gotta watch it.
I'm smiling, I'm crying.
Effective Mars and I, Stan has to put up with it.
Now I'll get out of you guys' hair. Congratulations to you, Stan.
Stan didn't do anything.
He's gonna go crazy, he can send me back to work.
Wait about six months, man.
I actually thought you guys were complaining this relief.
Actually, I believe they're having vacations, starting, I think, April the 13th. Stan says he's going on vacation in Las Vegas and June's going to Toronto, Canada. I made that up. Thanks again, June. Stan. Alright, at this point in our agenda, we will suspend our city council meeting as we go into a public hearing. To hear from our association with Greenville County Redevelopment Authority. There will be a presentation of Ms. Emma and after that, council, if you have questions, direct them to her. And then if there's any public question, she says she would be glad to take those. So, without any additional things, we're in public hearing at this time, Ms. Emma Wadnubi.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Councilmember. I'm gonna take this off so you can hear me better. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come back to you again, 2021, to talk about fiscal year 2021. Seems like a completely different era. Been last year, we're able to interact a lot more comfortably than now. But, and at this time, last year as well, we're going through the com-plan. So, I'll talk a little bit about some of the things that came out of the com-plan for us to go into some of the actions that we are being taken on. So, those of you that don't know about GCU area, I'll go back a little bit of history. We actually started operation in 1974, kind of established a little earlier based on state statute. And the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority, which I'll continue to say GCRA. We really take a very holistic approach in addressing community. We just don't do the housing, we do infrastructure, we also do public service, social, economic development, community development, things like that. Because, and it's not one shoe fits all, because everything or different places, they need different things. So, we try to focus on what's being needed. And, and that really helps us when we do a needs assessment for any particular area. Our main thing here is GCRA being the administrator of the federal funds that come into Greenville County. Greenville County being an urban county, being that we are more than 200,000, I think we are close to 5,000. When 2020 census comes. So, because of that, you're able to get the federal entitlement funds, which is a community development block grant, home investment partnership, and emergency solutions grant. And we've been doing this on behalf of the county through a cooperative agreement. And the agreement is like between GCRA and the Greenville County and the five municipalities, which Malden is one of it. Was Malden, Greer, Fountain Inn, Travelers Rest, and Simpsonville. And it helps to share it there so that way the cities don't go through a competitive process. So, we use the same formula that HOD uses for the county to divvy up the funding between the municipalities based on population, housing condition, poverty rate, and things like that. Also set aside some funding for the on-encore area as well. GCRA is, we have a 12-member board, which is appointed by the county council. So, when I talk about annual action plan, what is annual action plan? I will also take one step back to talk about the council data plan, which we did last year. The com-plan is basically a five-year strategic plan for the county. And when we did it last year, we went through a needs assessment from housing to community development and all of that. The com-plan has been approved by HOD. It actually helped us to address different goals, housing goal, homelessness goal, community development, economic development, neighborhood revitalization. So, taking the neighborhood and taking the different housing goals, the things that you need. And it helped us to come up with different objectives and strategies and programs to see how we could help. Because like I said, it's never one shoe fits all. And for this fiscal year, we're talking about starts July 1 of 2021, and next year, June 3rd, 2022. Right now, we're fiscal year 2020. When we did the five-year com-plan, we also did the first year of that five-year plan. So, that's what we went 2020. So, now, 2021 is technically going to be the second year of the next five-year plan. And what the annual action plan does is, when you take your five-year goal, each year, you come up with different things to achieve that five-year goal. So, at the end of that five years, HOD looks at it and say, okay, you had X amount of money for the past five years, what did you do? So, I can tell you for that last past five years, we met our housing goal. We met most of all the infrastructure improvements that we did, but you can never address everything because resources are very limited. However, that I would say we met the housing goal, but that doesn't mean we met the indigenous housing goal that's needed. Because it continues to increase, and I will talk about how different reports comes up with different numbers of housing that we have to address. And in helping this, the three major funding sources that we're going to be talking about this com-plan is community development block grant. That is one of the funds that really does a lot. It goes from housing to infrastructure to social services to public service to economic development and actually specific things you could use for neighborhoods. So, it's a very vast funding. And one thing is, it must serve low and moderate income families. But I can tell you consistently, for how long I've been with GCRA, it's the number of years, we've always done more than almost 90% of the funding used to address low, moderate income. So, we exceed the 70% that's required. And then you use it to address climate lights. And of course, urgent need, which could be disaster. But this particular time, we have public health pandemic. And I can talk to you about some of the funds that HOD made available for us to address some of those needs as well and how far some of the things we've done. The home funding is basically towards housing. Making housing affordable, making housing accessible, making them attainable, making them available. So, it could be your production, it could be how you put the number of units, how they are accessible to folks, down payment assistance, some programs like that. But it must be low and moderate income, and as a caveat, you cannot, it has to be 80% and below. And we have a slide that shows some of those income range. The third funding source, and I'm not gonna talk about it here, because it's not just for a particular municipality spread around, is emergency solutions grant. So, it's not part of this, but it addresses homelessness throughout the county. That is the one funding we can actually use within city limits of Greenville. Because that's the funding that city of Greenville don't get. City of Greenville is a separate entitlement, but they don't get emergency solutions grant. So, we're able to help residents, they were able to help providers of homeless shelters, funding to help them there. You can see, I went to shared a three-year funding allocation you've had. We actually just got the final numbers. It could change, because last year, we got final numbers and sometime later in November might changed a little bit. So, so far, we got final numbers late, early part of March. So, we make sure we recalculated everything. So, for fiscal year 2021, we got a little bit, actually got less than 2020 allocation, but more than 2019. And you can see how it reflects also in a total funding. The CDBG, the Community Development Block Grants, is 184,002. The program income is any, basically, that changes. That depends on interest or mortgages or if we build houses and some, you know, if it's with CDBG funds and people are paying back. So, it comes back to you as program income to be recycled and other things. A home grant is you're going to get 70,565. And then the home program income, based on either developers that we've given funding and they're paying back and it comes back and keep using and ones that we've changed, but we'll always put it back in yours. So, we're projecting about $26,000. It changes, depending if somebody pays off anything, your number will increase. And we'll always send those numbers to your administrator for them to know. So, for fiscal year 2021, we're projecting 296,567 between your CDBG, CDBG PI, home and home PI total. And this is a distribution of how thinking about things you have going on, thinking about projects that are, this is not the only fund you have, we still also have carry forward a funding that is still available to you. So, that's all, you have more than, you're going to have more than $296,000. So, for, between home program income and home grant, we're setting aside $88,565 towards any new construction that will be going on. And I will talk to you about a project, and then we're setting aside $8,000 for rental reserve, because we have rental properties that if some things that we have to fix and things like that, that money's there for it. Like the Miller Place project. And infrastructure, we're thinking about potentially putting some sidewalk along Miller Place, just along where we build those houses, so that's an option for the $94,000 change. But any other infrastructure project that you, the administration thinks fit that we can do, will do that. Thing with city of Malden is you don't particularly, actually not, you just don't have a qualifying census tract area. So, anytime we have to do infrastructure, any kind of facility improvement that is not for what we call limited clientele or seniors or things like that, we'll have to qualify the direct beneficiaries, like the houses are not going to qualify for that. And that's what we said the Miller Place. Because of the low-mod houses that we've built, that qualifies that section to be, we can do sidewalk from that intersection just to the end of the property. But after that, because the houses after are higher income, it has to be with other funding, not federal funds. We also have unoccupied rehab, then you do have funding set aside for your sub-reception, which is usually we have two, your senior program as well as the Center for Community Services. We've been getting a lot of requests for facade and economic development loans, so we've increased a little bit more. So, added additional $15,000, so you do have some funding there to help at least another three businesses. And economic development loan as well, we actually closed on Luna Rosa. I believe it was very, very instrumental in helping that they are, they were able to use the ED loan as well as the facade. So, we do have some requests, we're working through those businesses, they have to go through a business plan. We make them, you know, go through all of that, so hopefully comes true as well. So, this is kind of the distribution for 2021. When I talked about the com-plan and thinking about different ways that we've tried to address having, making sure we have affordable housing. We also make sure all of these funds are being able to be used to address this. The CDBG, the home, the ESG, and then the A, it's different, that's the affordable housing fund. It came from the county. About three years ago, the county promised to give GCRA a million dollars each year to help subsidize fund projects that we build. We actually used some of it to build the Miller Place project. So, we're able to use it for, that financing for a lot of tax credit projects, and I'll talk about how we've done that as well. So we're able to use it for either gap financing, for a lot of tax credit projects, and I'll talk about how we've done that as well. So at G C R E also, you know, we also developed just not homeownership units as well as rental units like the Miller Place. So we use it between our partners as well. Habitat for Humanities has come to us to fund it, so we're able to fund their project as well. And this particular year, we've, we went through the affordable, um, the NOFA for housing, um, projects. We got about seven proposals, five, four of them, which are light tech project all over the county. And others who are different partnership with other developers. So we use all these funds to help people and developers. We also have first time home buyers. That's a program we do with, um, the Community Works Carolina, they help us manage that program. We've actually increased the down payment assistance from five to ten thousand dollars. Because we realized that. Home ownership in Greenville, especially new construction, has really increased. Hardly, it's really difficult to find single family detached for under two hundred thousand dollars. They've increased two hundred and forty and twenty, you know. And because of the interest rate, you could get folks that are eighty percent, they'll qualify. But they probably need more down payment assistance. So that's why one of the things we increased it from five to ten thousand dollars. To make sure they're able to, but we want to make sure that. Once you qualify, the front end of your mortgage cannot be more than thirty or thirty three percent. So that way we're not setting you up for failure. The rental assistance and the, um, for homeless prevention and rental assistance for rapid rehousing. Those two particular program we help to E S G, the emergency solutions grant. And that way we're able to help folks that are literally homeless. We have a lot going on now. And we have, um, homeless prevention, those facing eviction. But I will tell you how that has been spin off due to COVID and how we've been able to expand that program to help a little bit more. And HUD has been able to provide us with additional funding to do those. We have the minor repair program, we've increased it to ten thousand dollars. And it helps seniors or persons living with disability to age in place. We've actually expanded that by having three other partners. Rebuild has always been one of our partners. Habitat has added and, um, Home Works. So we, ten thousand dollars, we're able to address any kind of code enforcement. But other things, the bathrooms and ramps and things like that to help families with disability or. Seniors, aging place, be able to address things that we need to, so they don't have to. That's one way we're able to do preservation of our existing housing stock as well. Besides that, we have a major unoccupied rehab that goes to anybody as long as you're low mod eighty percent and below. And we'll talk about that when I keep saying that eighty percent. It's good to, I'm visual, so I'll show you the numbers so that you can kind of link it. And that provides up to twenty five thousand dollars to homeowners. Very low interest rate from one to three percent, actually based on your income. And that could, you know, spread out and all that. And then, um, we also have mortgage loan fund. That's like an in-house financing for, uh, homeownership projects. Where if, um, home buyers are having a very difficult time with the mortgages and we know. They, they're able to or non-traditional credit. Or the interest rate being provided to them is a little bit too high, we help that. One other program we started last year was called Investor Program. And that's one thing we added because as a result of the con plan and the housing study. We realized that a lot of landlords complained that they're not able to fix the houses without passing on the cost to the tenants. So we provided a program for landlords, the mom and pops with rental properties that it can get funding for extremely low interest rate. For twenty five thousand dollars that it can fix and don't have to pass that cost to the tenants. And making sure those houses remain affordable. So those are kind of all different, nine different programs to help, and like I said, different places need different things. The Community Development Block Grants helps us, you go back one slide, sorry, sorry. The infrastructure projects, when I say the C D B G really expands our opportunity from infrastructure to facility. We did the senior center with the C D B G funds, um, demo, public service, neighborhood revitalization. Then the other economic development as well, the small business loans and facade. We've had clients have used. Small business and economic development loans in this particular area. I will continue to see, um, some of the things. We use demolish, um, slum and blights, potential problem sites that we can clean up. Demo for redevelopment, those kind of things helped as well. All right, I talked about, um. Some of the changes that's happened the past year. That actually, um, ensures that we're able to help residents in the county. To be, um, entitlement community and the COVID. Being part of what we say urgent need. HUD was able to provide to us E S G for an emergency solutions C V COVID. And the Community Development Block Round COVID. And with those, we actually were able to expand our public service activities. Rental assistance, utilities, assisted mortgage assistance, business assistance. We still have that, the business assistance, it could come to any of our, um, Community Works Carolina. We have ample, um, partners that help towards all this. So this first round of funds came on. By summer. So technically, we hit the ground running on those special funding in September. Just the span of three months, we're able to help at least a thousand, close to a thousand families. And it just continued. And these are multiple months of assistance. Because come that March, most people stopped, there was no jobs in April, May. So we had to help six months of rental, six months of mortgage, six months, you know. And it's still continuing. So just ending June, I mean, December thirty first, that tells you just rental mortgages and utilities. We're also able to provide food through different, some of our different partners were able to provide food to families. And it's still going on. So we finished the first round of funds from HUD, so we're going into the second COVID round. And adding it to what we'll call the annual, I made our annual action plan to increase that. So for the second round, we have almost two point two million dollars for C D B G C V and one point nine for E S G. E S G, basically the rental assistance and utilities are complete last what we're doing. And then some of them homeless shelters to help them retrofit their facilities to make sure they're able to keep things. Um, address some of the things to keep, um, adequate spacing and safety within that center as well. So that's just a little bit to tell you some of, added to what we have, what we do, the COVID relief as well. So, and we're still, people can call us for all, any of those needs. Your public service, uh, we did go through the proposals. And there it to, we get in the formal letter from our executive director. So two agencies, the Center for Community Services and the Parks and Rec for senior programs. So there's ten thousand dollars five hundred for the senior program and then five thousand dollars for the Center for Community Services. There's just a picture of some of the things, most of you were there for this, um, the opening, that's, project is closed out, finished. Um, the Miller Place eighteen units, um, duplexes. Actually involved not just the houses, we had to do the infrastructure and irrigation and signage and paving and the product. The houses are all occupied, everybody's in there. Um, we have about fourteen or fifteen or eighty percent and below. The remainder about the hundred percent A M I and we'll talk about all of that. So, but we ensure that they were actually below their median rent for molding. So there's the pictures of the Miller Place. Projects. So, uh, we have two projects that are about to start. In molding. We have the Mercy House in Southeast, this was an applicant that did a light tech project in two thousand nineteen. And funding from G C R E. So part of it using your home funds for twenty twenty. And, um, two hundred thousand dollars of affordable housing fund. They will be, they've already closed on all their funding, they've closed with the light tech, Volkswagen and all that. They're actually preparing, uh, virtual. Grand opening for the units. Thirty six, um, sorry, forty six housing units, right on Butler Road, so about three acres. And, um, it's going to be an L shaped house, the little star just kind of shows where the L shape will be. And a little club, um, gym slash multipurpose center. So, um, it's a nine percent tax credit, it's a nine point two million dollar project. So if you check, uh, leveraging is about one to almost thirty of what those funding sources, so that's great leveraging. And ensuring that all of the units will not exit sixty percent area of medium income. And the square foot from one bedroom to two to three have one, two and three bedrooms. And the range is going to be from six nineteen to nine sixty three. Still below the medium income, A C S, I checked today for medium income, you have for molding is a thousand three. And that is not a three bedroom. We have another project by N H E. This is a twenty twenty one application that is sent to us, but it's already an approved nine percent tax credit funding. So, um, came to us to address the gap funding. So we're recommending about seventy thousand dollars of your home funds, which you have about eighty. And then we'll use the remainder from the Affordable Housing Fund to meet their five hundred thousand dollar gap in the project. It's on the other side of, it's on the east Butler side. Believe they've come to you, I don't know if they've come to you for a site plan. So they, um, tax grade is, uh, four point five acre site for seventy two units. The interesting thing for this particular project as well is, I think they had numbers, their units, their prices would be about three hundred millim, all the way to maybe a thousand. But one of the thing is they actually have a partnership, which you would see to address some families that are chronically homeless. That it can have support services to that place as well. So that way it's not going to be families that are in temporary shelters. Having that support services, permanent support services helps a lot. And addressing thirty percent A M I, which is the very difficult. Target population because you have to put enough, a lot of subsidy to address that. When we did a con plan and different housing studies. Found out a lot of folks in the thirty percent A M I cannot find, they're usually cost burdened. And I'll explain a little bit of how we get to that. That's like they pay more than thirty percent of their gross income. They are proposing about three separate buildings and a clubhouse. Um, adequate parking spaces and all of that. So we'll talk about eighty percent A M I in Greenville County, area of medium income. HUD changes this in the justice each year. For fiscal, fiscal year twenty twenty, area medium income for Greenville County is seventy four thousand nine hundred. Molding census tract has about at least sixty thousand dollars. When we talk about area medium of thirty percent and below, that's the top line. That's like a family of one. About fifteen thousand each year, it comes close to maybe about seven dollars. And they can only afford, you can only, for rental, you cannot pay more than thirty percent of that for your house, the rental cost. And that is, we'll see the numbers to see how difficult it is to find any unit of that. So most of the folks in that first line are paying fifty, depends on how your income is adjusted to household size. You're paying fifty or sixty or seventy percent of your gross income for housing cost. So the fifty percent A M I is the middle and eighty percent is the lower end. So we talk about out of reach affordability. HUD also goes on to ha, give you a fair market rate. Saying at a zero, your, if you have a studio, it should be about six hundred and twenty eight, but we know that's not what's actual happening. One bedroom is seven hundred and forty, but we know this one bedroom is depending on the areas, it's something to a thousand. So, and it goes on. So somebody who is an SS one with a family, they get about a little over seven hundred thousand, seven hundred dollars a month. Thirty percent of that is two hundred and thirty four, we know we can't even find. Studio apartment for two hundred and thirty four. And then going again to the same, if you have. Minimum wage worker who gets about seven dollars twenty five cents. In order to be able to get, even pay one bed, you almost have to walk ninety. Hours, which is almost twice they can't afford to do that. They can't afford any of the, not even the studio. So coming into that, let me take the thirty percent A M I and that table that I showed you. For a family of four, making twenty two thousand four hundred and fifty. Coming to an hourly rate about close to eleven dollars is more than minimum wage. Coming into that, their monthly housing cost, if you take the thirty percent of that gross. Cannot be more than five hundred and sixty one a month. And this is a household of four. And technically needs to be two heartbeats per room. So technically they need two bedrooms. But for the studio, they cannot even afford the studio apartment. Because, but they will have to do that, means they're paying more than thirty percent or close to fifty. Once you pay more than thirty, you're cost burdened. Once you're paying close to fifty for them to get that, you severely cost burdened and we're talking about gross income. Not net with all the things that will go that further shrinks what you're talking about. And the same thing goes to if we're talking about the fifty percent family, a family of four. Make about thirty seven thousand dollars. Using their monthly payment for four family. It's a little better for them to, with nine hundred and thirty six, they can afford it two. But they cannot afford a three if they needed that, they will have to pay more than thirty percent of their gross income. What we talk about there, who is the low mod thirty, fifty and eighty? When you go back and divide. Come down to the twelve months or fifty two months, two weeks, come down to forty hours. This is what it tells you. It's your public service. Someone's a construction workers. This is just a little ta, takeaway from some of the reports that we did. The housing cost, um, that started the housing study that was done in two thousand eight, actually identified at that time. Sorry, two thousand eighteen identified that we were, we needed ninety five affordable housing in Greenville County. This is two thousand eighteen. But when we did the con plan, the chair starter actually said that we needed eighteen thousand of rentals and fourteen thousand of homeownership units. But the bottom line is, though the two numbers are different, but it recognizes the fact that you have indeed you just need affordable housing in the county. And one other thing. One other thing again is about forty one percent of the households in Greenville County. Lower mod rating. And thirty-two percent of the total population are seniors, so you're a third of your population. So purposefully intentionally planning for senior housing. And the rest is basically telling you basically what I've said about the housing cost burden, say seventy-one percent of rentals at thirty percent, excuse me, a thirty percent A M I or less, a cost burden greater than fifty percent. So in doing all this, it just kind of reminds us of how we have to be intentional and purposefully planning for affordable housing. Their annual action plan that we're talking about, the funding, the total number of funds for Green, uh, City of Malden, the two hundred ninety-six is our goal for the resolution that we have. The resolution would be passed bef- on or before the end of March twenty twenty-one, because we have to take it to the next level county council as well. Thank you, thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to talk to you about the, the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any questions, counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the, the two projects you showed were higher density. Is that something that we're going to say, we're going to see a little bit more of as the funding goes forward, is trying to trend to higher density rather than single family or dual family homes?
It's a combination, but in order to have that, uh, what's going on, and I think for developers as well, just the cost of having those, um, most of the Lytec projects are usually higher density, they're forty-something plus. Um, if the sites, it's able to take the density, of course, that's why I said they go through the planning to make sure that the, um, density is right. But it's, uh, how doesn't have a particular way. Each developer come up with different things that are on the niche that they have. Most of those developers are Lytec developers and they build those, um, higher density. But they're actually also sensitive to the, the surrounding as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Anyone else? Is there any public would like to, uh, pose a question? Yes, sir?
Definitely, um.
Yes, thank you for your question. If you could come to the podium so that we, the, the folks that are viewing online can hear your question. It's, it's for the city of Malden. What, what we can do is we can put the, I'm his presentation online. Um, and that way you can have a, you can see a copy of it and, and, and review it. Yes, it will be hers. Yes, it will be her present, what you just saw to the, this, this evening. Yes, the Malden City's website.
Thank you, anyone else? Simon, thank you very much for the presentation and time this evening and the information. Uh, with that, we will consider ourselves closed from the public hearing and move back into our normal city council meeting agenda items. Uh, we'll pick up here, item four, reading and approval of the minutes for the city council meeting of February the fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Pleasure of counsel.
Move for approval.
We have a motion for Mr. Mattney of moving for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, uh, in stereo, but Mr. King, got you. All right, any discussion? One item I noticed, I think Cindy, we might have already talked about on page eight, item six F, eliminate the words Mayor Terry Merritt. I think the department director was Dale Black. I think we'd already gone over that earlier. All right, good. So that was, has been corrected. To any others? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. I was looking, Ms. Kuzner, unmute yourself.
Sorry, aye.
Thank you. All right, seven of, uh, where those opposed like sign. Here none, minutes are approved, this submitted seven of. Okay, we are to public comment. Ms. Miller, is there anyone signed up for public comment on items on the agenda? There they are, none. We will move to our report from our city administrator, Mr. Madden.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, there are two things I want to report on. The first is, uh, the city, uh, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty twenty-two budget process has commenced. It started this past Thursday. A draft of the proposed budget will be placed on the city's website under the finance department. In, in the event, any members of the public would like to view the document. The next budget workshop is scheduled for April first at six P M. in the second floor conference room here at city hall. It will be available remotely, uh, via Zoom in the event that any, uh, members of the public are unable to attend in person. Secondly, I want to recognize Chief Turner. This is, uh, as you know, he announced his retirement effective, uh, the first of next month. This is his last council meeting here. I want to thank him for his service and also want to, um, recognize Mr. Lieutenant George Miller, who will be stepping up to service, um, interim upon the chief's, uh, retirement in April. Uh, so thank you, chief, for your service. That concludes my report.
Okay, just, uh, as a token of my appreciation, Chief Turner, thank you. Thank you. Forward to it, Mr. Lieutenant Miller. All right, next item, uh, report from standing committees, uh, finance and policy, Mr. Reynolds, anything?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Mr. Madden covered both items I was going to report on through my committee, so. I have nothing tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let the records note, Mr. Reynolds said nothing. Public safety. Ms. King.
That's unusual for Mr. Reynolds. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Madden covered, um, some of what I was going to talk about as well, but I would like to take a moment to, um, say thank you to Chief Turner. It's been, whoa, I didn't know I was going to get emotional on this. Um, we thank you. Um, chief has served twenty-six years in law enforcement, if my math was correct, and I'm usually pretty good in math, and has been with the city of Malden for fifteen years. So we thank you, we appreciate your service, um, wish you and your sweet bride and your four beautiful children, um, a great future and look forward to seeing what that next chapter of your life looks like. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. King.
You weren't supposed to make me do that, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Public works, Mr. Craylon, anything?
Nothing reported this time.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Mattney, economic planning and development.
We're good, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Building goes, Ms. Kuzner.
I have nothing to report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzner. Recreation, Mr. Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to put it on the record to how much that, um, myself and the rest of the council and the city appreciate Mr. Bart Comalander, Willie, and Andre and the entire staff at the recreation department, the sports center, the senior center, all the hard work that they do for this city. And if you see the results from the basketball programs, we presented the plaques and everything tonight. And I think they've done an excellent job. I just like to amend them and we're glad to have them and we're, we're real fortunate to have them on our staff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all we have.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Uh, unfinished items, there are none. We'll move into new business, our first ordinance, the first reading, uh, Ms. Miller.
We have two ordinances for first reading tonight. First one is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Tommy Steele K. and located at four oh nine East Butler Road by one hundred percent petition method and to establish the zoning classification of C two.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. That'll be coming from, uh, building of service, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve this ordinance on first reading.
Okay, I have a motion for Ms. Kuzner, is there a second? Second for Mr. Black, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, I would like to, uh, tell the public that those who are not familiar, this piece of property is on East Butler. Mr. K is, the house is up on the hill across from the pavilion, the creek there. And, uh, he's been there for a long time, but that, that is the piece of property, just for reference, if somebody didn't know where it was. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Any other discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the ordinance on first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, motion carries on first reading, seven zero. Back to you, Ms. Miller.
Second ordinance tonight is an ordinance to amend the Malden zoning ordinance, introduce a table of allowed uses applicable to various zoning districts, provide descriptions of the uses allowed, provide additional standards for conditional and special exception uses, introduce general building design standards, amend the non-conforming use standards and other related amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Back to you, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve this ordinance on first reading.
Thank you. Have a motion for Ms. Kuzner, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second for Mr. Black. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries, orders on first reading, seven zero. Thank you. Next word to standing committee items, uh, Ms. Miller.
First standing committee item we have is a resolution to rename Center Point Boulevard to Bridgeway Boulevard. The owner of this street, Center Point Land Inc., has formally requested that this street in its entirety be renamed to Bridgway Boulevard. The intent for renaming this street to Bridgway Boulevard is so that it will be consistent with the naming and theme for the future development of this tract, which will be known as Bridgway Station.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. That also comes out building development, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
Okay, motion from Ms. Kuzner to approve the resolution to rename Center Point Boulevard to Bridgway Boulevard. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Black, Mr. Mattney. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries, seven zero. Ms. Miller.
Council is requested to approve an amendment to its workplace privacy slash computer and internet use policy to clarify the guidelines for comments on the city's social media platforms.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. This comes out of finance and policy, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment to our workplace privacy, computer, and internet policy use. It's presented in your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second? Have a second for Ms. King. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the amendment to the social media policies, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries, seven zero. Next item, E, Ms. Miller.
Council is requested to consider and approve a resolution to approve the purchase of property located at two oh six Libby Lane and to authorize the mayor to execute the attached contract and any other documents necessary for the purchase of the property.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Also from finance, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution for the purchase of property located at two oh six Libby Lane.
I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. King. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Madden, is this something that we need to read the resolution for the purpose of record?
No, I think, uh, Mr. Reynolds, members of council, I, just reading the title should be sufficient, which is what Cindy did.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Madden. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. All right, we have a motion before us for, to approve the resolution for the purchase of property located at two oh six Libby Lane and to authorize the mayor to execute the attached contract and any other documents necessary for the purchase of this property. Any other discussion? Here none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries, seven zero. Uh, next item, Ms. Miller.
Council is requested cons- to consider and approve a resolution to authorize an account to be opened in the name of the city with National Financial Services and identify those officers or individuals authorized by resolution to transact business on the account.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller. This comes also from finance, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the purpose of discussion, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve a resolution to authorize an account to be opened in the name of the city of Malden with National Financial Services.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. There's a motion to approve, is there a second? Have a second for Ms. King, any discussion? Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Within this, we'll have to, I think, to be prudent is to go ahead and name who our identifying officers are. That's what I'd like to discuss as we talk about this. What's been done in the past is Ms. Abercrombie has had to put her personal information on file to do this. And I'd like to have council feedback on whether or not our finance director's responsibility is to have her personal information out there for this or do we appoint another officer instead.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Uh, okay, if I defer first to Mr. Madden, I think we had a discussion earlier of what could be done here. And then we can get counsel to weigh in also.
Uh, yes, Mayor, um, the, I could be named as the official custodian. Um, and that, that should be sufficient for, for this document, or the councils approving tonight, or reviewing tonight.
Okay.
You okay?
Yes, and, uh, we, Mr. Madden and I went over this proposal. It's a standard bank form that they're using, uh, to accomplish this. So if we're going to open an account, this is the document that is out there in the house. And Mr. Madden and I discussed who should be the name or.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Then I could amend my motion to also name the sitting city administrator as the identifying officer for these accounts. Official custodian, as I guess the way it should be.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, so.
That's an amendment to my first motion, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds has proposed an amendment to, to his original motion to, in the documentation, to name the official custodian as our city administrator. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, I have a second from Mr. Mattney on the amendment. Sorry, I'm slow making my notes here. Any discussion on the amendment? Here none, all those in favor of the amendment to name the official custodian within a document says our city administrator, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the amendment carries, now we're back to the original motion as amended to provide the, uh, necessary documentation as the official custodian for our resolution to authorize an account to be opened in the name of the city. And the official custodian will be our city administrator. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I'm, sorry, I'm sorry.
Just, just for the record, this is not specific to any particular bank. This would be anywhere we were banking, correct? And this requirement. Correct, okay. That's one of that for the record, thank you.
Good, thank you, Mr. Crayton, sorry about that. Anyone else? Mr. Reynolds.
Just following up on what Mr. Crayling said, this came out of committee and I voiced my concerns with it there, and I still have. and I still have real concerns with it, but understanding it's a federal regulation, it's just one of those things that I look at and as an officer of the city, it should be good enough to just be an officer without their personal information. So for the record, I just want to put out there that it's important to protect our employees' personal information as well. Unfortunately, Mr. Madden, apparently you're not. Just kidding. But that's all I have for that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any other discussion? All right, you're none. We're back to the motion as amended to approve a resolution to authorize an account to be opened in the name of the city with National Finance Services with the named official custodian as our city administrator. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? You're none. The motion carries, seven zero, as amended. Thank you.
I got it, Mayor.
Got it. Okay, Ms. Miller? Oh.
Oh, that's right.
Next item is the amendment to the wrecker fee schedule. Staff is recommending the attached fee schedule for wrecker services on the rotation list for the City of Malden. This fee schedule will be followed anytime the Malden Communications Center contacts a wrecker service to tow a vehicle for police or fire purposes.
Okay, is this coming from Economic Development? No, it's coming from Public Safety. Okay, good. All right, Ms. King?
He was looking at me, but said another department.
They had both cups. I was...
He was one ahead, I think.
Oh, I got you. All right, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion at this time to approve the amendment to the wrecker fee schedule as indicated, as was presented in our packet.
Okay, thank you, Ms. King. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? The motion before us is to, a resolution to amend our wrecker fee schedule as presented in the packet. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign? You're none. The motion carries. Back to you, Ms. Miller?
I'm gonna give Ms. Miller a break, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Matney.
I move that we approve an electrical upgrade for the Cultural Center and an amount not to exceed $15,000 to launch Beach and Christmas, approve the use and coordination of city-sponsored festival activities, including the barbecue festival, summer market, Beach and Fridays, and the use of the Cultural Center ground.
We have a motion from Mr. Matney, as he stated. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Mr. Krail, is there any discussion? Mr. Black?
Mayor, just for the record, I think, Mr. Matney, is this correct, this funding is coming out of the department budget?
Mr. Broad, we're using that, was it H and A?
That I can, I thought I'd read somewhere in here that, uh, community development budget funding is available to absorb the cost.
Well, that, that would be H and A funding. Originally, we put in there that we had not spent on any of last year's summer funding. So there's plenty of money left from our side.
I asked, I figured it's coming out of H and A, but I didn't see it spelt out. There's...
Yes, sir.
H and A, just said coming out of the budget, so I have no problem with it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You may want to amend it to specify that.
Black, any other discussion? Ms. King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add that this is, the Beach and Christmas was presented back in 2018, I believe, and never did quite make it to this point. So I just wanted to go on record and say I am super excited to see this, and we've been saying for a long time, we want the Cultural Center to be a destination point for the City of Malden, and this is just another event that will assist us in doing so. So thank you, Mr. Broad, and Mr. Matney.
Ms. King, any other discussion? Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Normally, I would call out this as an unbudgeted item, but this seems like it'd be something that would be useful for the long term of the city, but I would normally like to see something like this come out of the CIP or thought of since we're so close into the budget process. But as it is, I have no problem with this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds? Any other discussion? You're none. All those in favor of the motion to approve an electrical upgrade to Cultural Center to further, not to exceed $15,000, to further our event program in potential with a title of Beach and Christmas? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? You're none. The motion carries, seven zero. Okay, we are, back to you, Ms. Miller?
The next item is the amendment to engineering agreement. Authorization is requested to approve an amendment to the agreement dated March 17th, 2015, between the City of Malden and Fraser Engineering for sewer rehabilitation. The costs associated with this item will not exceed the budgeted amount of $300,000, and staff recommends the city council approve the amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Krail?
I'd like to, this time, make an amendment, or request an amendment to the agreement dated March 17th, 2015, between the City of Malden and Fraser Engineering at this time.
A motion?
A motion, sorry.
Okay, good. All right, thank you, Mr. Krail. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion?
Just, I, yes, just wanted to make point, this is not a financial change. This is a scope change from the engineering firm to do additional work. This is not, correct?
That's great, Mr. Krail.
Thank you. Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Krail. Any other discussion? You're none. All those in favor of the motion to approve an amendment to the agreement with Fraser Engineering and of the $300,000 not to exceed, it's in the budget of the Sewer Division now, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? You're none. The motion carries, seven zero. Next item on the agenda is a consideration for council to enter into an executive session for a contractual matter upon the pleasure of council.
May I make a motion to enter into executive session for consideration of a contractual matter related to project F D as allowed by state statute, section 30, that's four thousand seventy-eight.
I have a motion for executive session as stated by the state statutes. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Stereo. Any discussion? You're none. All those in favor, we go into exec session or contractual matter, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? You're none. We now consider ourselves executive session upstairs in the conference room. Audience, we shall return shortly. Thank you.
I ain't scared of many people. Go land. I ain't scared of many people.
Huh.
Exercise. And I'll tell them my second green. Everybody ready?
Ready.
I got the green light. Oh, we're returning from executive session approximately nine twenty eight P M. Next item on the agenda.
It's report.
Somebody like to report out?
Coming out of executive section nine twenty six, no decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Thank you, Mr. Matney. All right, next item on the agenda is possible action on items discussed in executive session. Is there any action? Hearing none, we'll move on to committee of the whole request for the Greenville County C D B G and home fund program year twenty twenty one. What's the pleasure of council? Committee of the.
The informal, yes, the informal method.
Okay, have a motion for Miss King to enter into committee of the whole and the informal method to consider a resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, but Mr. Reynolds, any discussion? You're not all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, you're none, we will now consider item L as committee of the whole in the informal method. That would be, who takes that with, I guess it could be finance.
That's fine. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution presented for us for the C D B G funding program. I'm sorry, I didn't have my. My, uh.
You're on the spot. Okay, so.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve the resolution for allocation of Greenville County C D B G and home funds program for the year twenty twenty.
One.
And twenty, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor, twenty twenty one. I lost the whole year of my life.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reynolds, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Miss King or Mr. Grayland? Uh, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion for the resolution for allocation of Greenville County C D B G and home funds for program year twenty twenty one, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. We're now back to item ten, public comment, is there any public comment, anyone signed up, Ms. Miller, that we're aware of, okay? Hearing none, we're good, uh, council request. Mr. Matney.
A couple of things, Mayor, um, number one, um, I'd like for us to consider reauthorizing the remote participation emergency ordinance. Uh, I know that under our current rules, um, we are allowed to participate remotely, uh, as long as, uh, folks can see and hear us, however, we can't vote remotely and we can't, uh, preside remotely without the emergency ordinance. And I would just be concerned that, uh, you know, as long as the, the governor's emergency order is in place, a state of emergency is in place, that continually having our emergency ordinance following that, um, is a tool in our toolbox in case we come up with a situation where we have, uh, members with COVID who still want to participate, but, um, can want to participate remotely. Um, and, you know, heaven forbid that the numbers start going in the opposite direction that they are now and things have to shut down again. I don't anticipate that happening, but again, I'm not an infectious disease expert, um, but I, I just would like for us to, to take a look at that. I don't think that it's something that we need to look at as, uh, being abused, I think that it has a, a real purpose. And as long as the governor continues issuing the state of emergency order, uh, I'd like to see us take a look at that. The other piece, and I'm glad that he walked back in, um, but chief, I have had so many people over the past couple of weeks come up to me and, uh, say the same thing, that we hate Brian Turner is retiring. Um, you have been my friend before I got elected, you, uh, listened to me moan and groan after I got elected, uh, and, and, and you still continue to be my friend. Um, you have been through a lot in the past fifteen years, you have watched this city grow, you've watched this department change. You have, along with your officers, continued to help increase the professionalism of this department. Um, as a council member, I want to thank you as your friend, I want to thank you, but more importantly, as a resident of the city of Malton, I want to thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Matney, any other council concerns?
Mr. Mayor, just to Mr. Matney's concern, Mr. Madden, would you have that item placed on committee or finance for next committee meeting? Thank you, Mr. Matney, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I can. And if I can second Mr. Matney on chief, I can't say it better, so second what he said.
One additional thing I have is I have received today free tickets for one child aged three to 13 with a paid adult to the Monster Truck Z pit party and show out at the Greenville Pick and Speedway, and I have about 22 of those tickets. I will pass those along to Mr. Putnam in the HR department for distribution for anybody first come, first served that would like to participate in that or have grandchildren, some of us with great, great grandchildren that might want to take them out there type thing, so I'll get those to you tomorrow, the next day. I think Mr. Putnam left, but he was aware of what I was going to do there. All I have. Anything else? Pleasure of council adjournment?
So moved.
Yeah, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
We, oh, I'm supposed to do this. We are adjourned approximately 9:32.